Sarah?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
John?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Nathan? Here. All right. Item 2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3, Consent Agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with one change. We have some discussion on some ducks at 2:30 East Market on here twice, so I'm going to ask to remove item 6A and just leave the discussion for 5A.
All right. We have a motion to approve with the 6A change. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Item 4, Public Input. This is the time and place for discussion items not already on the agenda, with a time limit of three minutes each. Would anybody like to say anything? Please state your name.
Joe Miller.
Hi, Joe.
I sent an email asking about the separation package for Connie.
Yep.
To look at Exhibit A. I don't have it.
We did send that to you today. I got notice last night that it was delinquent.
I sent it today.
But I apologize for how late that was, but you should be able to review that in your email.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about it?
I'm just curious what we're doing, I guess.
That's public knowledge, so I don't know why we can't discuss it. I don't know what that separation agreement is. And I, you guys stay with me so that if I miss something. Connie is working through the month, Connie's retiring, so she's going to work through the month of July full-time, and then she is going to work August, September, and October up to 20 hours per week. We will still be paying her, and we will still be paying her benefits during that time. And that is Connie did the job of two people. One was the administrator and one was the clerk. We have an administrator that came on with experience, so we're good there, but we do not have a clerk with experience. And we had four applicants for the clerk, and only one of them even had any, like, city experience. So that is basically what she will be spending the bulk of those, that time doing, is training that new clerk. In addition to that, she just got done doing our audit, and there's a bunch of year-end reports and things like that that have to be filed before December. So that's what she's spending the rest of her time doing during that. And then every employee who leaves gets their, whether they retire, resign, get fired, whatever, they get any vacation that they have, any personal time that they have, and any comp time that they have. So she got all of that. When you retire, per our union contract, you get your sick time. So she got that. Did I miss anything?
I think that covers it, yeah. The commitment, commitment to do some more work and help in get Jeff and our future clerk up to speed is, brings a lot of value to that, so.
I think, too, one thing that's really important for the town to recognize is that Connie is leaving with a lot of valuable information, so we need to be able to call on her in the future, especially like for the complex and things like that. I mean, she, she got over a million dollars' worth of grants for the city in the time that she was here. And most recently, you're going to see us later tonight do a $5.2 million bond. She came to us and asked us to do that bond because the interest rates were so low, and we did that bond, and we saved $160,000 in interest by doing that bond that way.
And that bond is for what?
That bond was refinancing $100,000 that we already had out there in a bond, and then it's for the complex and water main project.
But it, yeah, it also refinanced some existing debt and saved us over, what, $160,000?
We thought we were going to save like $100,000 because we thought we were going to get like a 2.2% rate, but we've never been rated as a city, and so they did that this year, and this was the first time we've ever really been eligible for it. And because we have so much, I don't know if you know, but when Connie came on here, we, the city was in trouble, and what she has turned things around dramatically, and the city got the best possible rating that it could get because of all the financial stuff and because of the money that, the cash that we have on hand.
So the audits are doing now, so it's like a normal audit?
Yep, every year.
Typical annual audit.
Yep, every year we have an audit. And so that's happening now, and then it's, it's an independent third-party group, so they have nothing to do with the city or...
State or...
They're private, yeah. They're independent.
The state requires it, but you usually contract with a private auditing firm.
Okay. I do have another question. You guys mentioned about the city employees turning it over to the city administrator. Who was over it now, before that?
It depends. Who are you specifically?
Tell them what to do now.
What specifically are you talking about? What employees specifically?
Who did the answer to? If you're going to turn it over to the city administrator, who was doing it before that?
Well, it's different for every employee.
And all assigned to a group, I would assume, like, one is over the police?
No, we're just actually liaisons. So if the police department has an issue, or the fire department has an issue, they come to their liaison.
Yeah. So depending on who the employee is, that answer is different for every employee. So like the three maintenance guys, so Chris Coleman, Chris Rodman, Nate Slaton, I want, you want to say Nate Smith, and Drayton, the Park and Rec Director, they report to Travis Bagby, and then Travis reports to the administrator. The police department, the officers always reported to Rick, and Rick reported to the mayor. The clerk...
Fire chief.
The clerk and the, well, the fire chief, yeah. The clerk and the fire chief report to the city administrator. So going forward, because right now we don't have a police chief, they will be reporting to the administrator instead of the mayor. We do, we have two officers, yep.
Both active?
Yes, both active officers, yep. And then we also have, since this has happened, we've had three officers contact us with interest in being part-time officers, and we've hired one, which is Brandon Siggens. I don't know if you guys are familiar with him. And then obviously, we've contracted a little more with Motford, and they used to do 10 hours a week for us, and we're upping that time with them.
So when you move the future to turn it over to the city administrator, who's going to overlook all that?
The council.
That's always the city council.
The county, the city administrator reports to the council. Yep, that's the hierarchy. When Doug was mayor, before he took a leave of absence, he wanted the individual departments, and so individual departments would be Public Works, Sewer, the Library Board, the History Center, Park and Rec, the Police Department, the Fire Department, there's a whole list of them. Every one of those departments has at least two people on the council that are their liaisons. So he wanted everybody to report to their individual liaisons with questions instead of coming to him. And so that's kind of how it's gone since he's been mayor in January.
All right. Anything else?
Anything else?
Anything else? All right, moving on. 5A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Hearing on Ducks at 2:30 East Market Street.
Or did we move that to 6?
No, we got rid of 6, so they don't have to stay.
Move it to 5A.
Yeah, backwards.
Hi, I'm Lee Gibby. Last December, we purchased the church over at 2:30 East Market. The spring after COVID, I sent my little girl home a whole lot. I bought some ducks with the intention of just having them be pets and maybe get some eggs. And, you know, at the moment, we have six, but my intention is that we can keep all six because we're not breeding them, we have to keep them long enough to figure out what the sex is, and then get rid of the excess at that point. So we got them, but same time my neighbor got chickens, and to the delight of our neighbors, everyone has walked by and always taken interest in saying how wonderful it is to the ducks. We do have signed sheets saying that all of our neighbors don't find it to be a nuisance whatsoever. I guess what we're seeking is just a waiver. We don't want you to change any, you know, go out of your way or anything, but if we could just get a waiver so my little girl can have some pet ducks, my wife can have some eggs, I'd really appreciate that.
Did you check with the city ordinances before you decided to buy ducks?
When I found out my neighbor's got the chicken on, they said there was some chicken, something you've got to fill out, I got online and looked through for anything on ducks at all. The only thing I came up with was Marion. You have to have special permission in Marion, Iowa to have ducks. I did a lot of research. Even the kind of ducks we have, they're Pekin ducks, they're very, very friendly. They don't fly. I did a lot of research before doing this. I didn't go to school, I had a cocked and bring home some ducks one day. But I didn't find anything as far as Lisbon and ducks. It was only recently when I got the letter that I find out that they're classified under livestock, and that would be a problem.
Yeah, so per our ordinance, livestock are not allowed within the city limits, and ducks are part of the definition of livestock. And the problem with it really is, not that I think your ducks are going to cause a problem or anything, and maybe they will, maybe they won't, I don't know, but the problem is, first of all, we can't just issue you a waiver and say that you can have ducks because it's against our ordinance. We would have to change our ordinance for one thing to match it. The other thing is, is once we change our ordinance to allow ducks, we're going to run into a problem with other people wanting different kinds of livestock. And the chicken thing was, I don't know if everybody remembers, a huge debate, and I was actually surprised that that got passed, but it did. So I, I mean, obviously, this council's going to vote on it. I am of the mindset that we would not be, we would not be able to allow your ducks, unfortunately, per the ordinance.
Was my understanding that ducks are classified poultry and not livestock?
If you look at our ordinance, our definition of livestock does include poultry. Yep.
Where do we fall on other things? Like, I've known people have rabbits in cages, and they're raising them for meat or pets.
Well, I don't, livestock definition's right there.
By my definition, yeah, but it's whatever the ordinance says.
So per our ordinance, livestock means an animal belonging to the bovine, caprine, equine, ovine, or porcine species, ostriches, rays and emus, farm deer, as defined in Section 170.1 of the Iowa Code, or poultry. Pet, in a different, and this is the whole thing about our animals. Pet means a living dog, cat, or animal normally maintained in a small tank or cage in a near, in or near a residence, including but not limited to rabbit, gerbil, hamster, mouse, parrot, canary, finch, tropical fish, goldfish, snake, turtle, gecko, iguana. So we allow for rabbits as part of our definition of a pet, but we don't allow for poultry as part of our definition of a livestock.
Is there a way to classify other ducks, pets?
Not per the code as it is right now, no.
Yeah, the only consideration I have is do ducks make more noise than chickens? I know we don't allow rubbers because of their crowing importance. Obviously, these ducks are comparable to the neighbor's chickens, I can tell. I think maybe we ought to review the section again, if ducks don't make any more of a nuisance than chickens do, why do we exclude ducks?
How you keep them, is it the same as your neighbor's chickens?
They're kept in the pen. They have two enclosures they can go into at night or in the cold. We let them out in the yard once, two or three times a day, let them exercise because they need more room. The enclosure is very small because they're, you're preyed on, from what I understand in my research, eagles can't really dive straight down, so you want something very closed and very small. So yeah, that's, I guess that's the closure.
Is your yard fenced?
It is not.
So when you let them out for their exercise three times a day or whatever, do they wander?
Never.
Never.
They don't even go to our neighbor's yard, it doesn't have a fence either.
Neither do I.
And they're supervised by the council.
My only concern with doing a waiver of sorts is, or even allowing, is just the precedents that you're setting, like we said before. It starts this way, and then it'll just keep going and going and going until, you know, we've allowed everything in there. That's my biggest concern. I just don't want to set a precedence for that.
Have you thought about getting chickens?
Well, again, the research says if you want eggs, get ducks. And chickens, I mean, that whole thing about pecking, pecking party is quite true. They have little nasty tempers at times, so I'm hard to very friendly duck. I'm hard to duck.
I used to work at a place that had a bunch of ducks, and they were not so friendly sometimes, too, but I know there's different kinds.
I had ducks chase me when I was a kid because we had ducks, so I, I didn't, but I don't know what kind of ducks my parents had, but they chased me a lot. Maybe it was payback because I chased them, but, I mean...
Well, what do you guys want to do?
Well, to John, to John's point, we could review it, but we can't grant you a waiver tonight. We can't change the ordinance inside of, what, six weeks?
Yeah.
And I, can I just mention one thing? In, in our ordinance, it also says even with chickens, you have to have a permit. So, you know, coming to the city hall and finding out, even just calling, maybe would have been the first step to take before you went out and purchased these ducks, because regardless if you have chickens, you still have to have a permit to have them, so.
And I knew going into the chicken, chickens had a permit. I'd be very happy to get whatever permit you want for ducks. I mean, I guess I don't see much difference between ducks and chickens, other than ducks are more friendly, and they lay more often, and eat more eggs.
What do you guys think?
Should we, I am...
Should we review? I will review it if you guys want to.
I'll, I'll review. We can review it.
I don't think we can take any action tonight. We certainly can't change ordinance in one night.
No.
We can't even change the ordinance in two months.
About six weeks, eight weeks.
I don't think we want someone to get rid of their pet ducks if we're going to possibly allow them in two months.
Well, you'll have to put it on the agenda for the next council meeting and have discussion on it, and if council decides that they want to change it. I mean, obviously, he's going to have a pass for the next two weeks. Did you, how did this come to be?
I was, or somebody reported it to me.
So you got a complaint from a neighbor or something? Okay.
I won't do anything while the council's deliberating us, so I'm not going to...
Yeah, right.
Repudiative towards it.
Well, we'll just, we'll...
We're going to put it on the next agenda.
Discuss next agenda.
Do we have signed sheets from the neighbors?
Sure. I mean, anything that you have to plead your case, if you have anything, research or anything that you want us to look at that you might see that we don't see, you can turn anything into Jeff, and he'll make sure that we all get copies of it.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, 5B, Discussion and Possible Action of Goal Setting, 2021 to 2025.
Yeah, this is, I don't know if you saw, Pat's had a memo in there to the council and the mayor, as well as a lay of his fee structure. The just, the date we talked about, there was, was August 17th or 18th. There's one, that'd be a Monday or Tuesday in between the two council meetings in, in August, with the backup date. If that didn't work, we were going to go to the 27th of August.
I think we need a full session, because I know that in the past, the, the first one's always, you know, it's always taken a while, it's been hours.
So do you want to do an off week, just to...
Didn't you say the 17th was an off week?
Yeah, it is. Yeah. Do you guys want to do that?
Do you want to just stick with Monday?
Pat has a lot of wind, so it's sometimes, you know, he likes to talk.
He does like to talk.
Yeah. So yeah, that 17th will work.
Okay. Would you like to start maybe a little earlier than we start a normal council meeting?
Yeah.
Like, could we do 6?
Can you do a 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do 6 o'clock.
John, 6 o'clock, okay?
Okay. All right, we'll get back with Pat and...
Do you need a motion for that?
I could use a motion to go forward, yeah, with the...
I make a motion to move forward with Pat Callahan on August 17th at 6:00 PM.
Do we have a second? Second by Stephanie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right. 5C, Discussion on Possible Action Installing Culvert adjacent to New Park on West Market Street.
So, yeah, right down here, just past where Barbara Guy used to live. City repaired one side of the road.
South side?
Yep, from sloughing off, and now the north side's doing the same. Our engineering numbers came in around 15. I waited, and we talked with Recky, and their number came in at 85. So I would like to move forward with that. That's with the city hall.
8,500.
Yeah.
$8,578.83.
Yep, right. That's with the city hall, and we're taking and removing our spoil pile from the cemetery, and cleaning that area up, and using that to extend the edge of the road and then the culvert.
Make a motion to approve Recky installing the culvert for $8,578.83.
And that's just in that one area, right?
Yeah, and just the north side.
So, can I say something? Do you guys just deal with Recky exclusively, or do you guys ever get in the venture anybody else, or how is that work?
It depends on the project.
Yeah. When it's, if it's deemed a maintenance, we have a maintenance contract with Recky. I mean, I'm not trying to criticize, I'm just saying, you know, if you have a bigger shit with somebody, or something, I'm just, you know, or I'm giving a bad...
That's a good question.
Sometimes if it's like a bigger project or different, we'll go out for bids, and we have to have at least like three of them to pick from, but if it's something like this, it's just general maintenance.
So the culvert work they're doing, is that for the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan? Aye. All right. 5E, Discussion on Possible Action Setting Public Hearing for Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Amendment Number 1 for August 10th, 2020. So we want to have the public hearing on...
Yeah, we just want, well, right, we have the public hearing and then the motion. So this is covered mostly because of the big bond, the proceeds and the big bond we just did, and then we did do an adjustment for road use tax down a little bit, and that's Connie and I went over what we thought.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. We went down, we did some reductions for the road use tax in there.
Do you want to explain that to them, why, why we're seeing a reduction in road use?
Sure. COVID, we're expecting a hit in COVID of about $70,000 to road use tax for the city. It's about a quarter of our revenue, this fuel tax. We're expecting that.
That's because nobody's driving.
Less people driving. That's what the DOT told us to expect, was, and judging by the last four months, that's about what we're seeing.
And our road use fund funds a lot of things, other than just, funds some salaries for maintenance workers, there's other things that come out of that than just road, you know, than just road maintenance and stuff like that.
Snow removal.
Yeah, so it, it's a hit for sure. Hopefully, it'll get back.
So those are the two big things on this, on the amendment.
Well, I make a motion to set the public hearing for August 10th. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan? Aye. All right. 5F, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Advertising for Deputy/Billing Clerk Position. This is to, yeah, this...
Yep. So later on, we're going to be hiring Christina as our new clerk, but she's the current utility billing clerk.
Yep.
And so we need to fill her position now. And so that's what this will be for.
Okay, to authorize to advertise this position.
So I make a motion to allow Jeff to advertise for the deputy billing clerk position in all the places that we are required to advertise.
The local paper, the Gazette.
Yep. And how long do you guys want that open, the posting? You want two weeks, four weeks?
I think we usually do two weeks, and then revise, like, once those, we review to see how many applicants, and then we repost if we need to.
And we did...
I know that's what we did with another position.
And we'll, we'll be able to review on the 10th.
We did actually let the sun know that we were going to need a spot for this, so they'll still be able to get it in this week, because we let them know ahead of time that we were going to need that, so.
All right, we have a motion. I will second. Travis?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
All right, moving on. Section 6, Public Hearings Ordinance Resolutions. 6B, we're skipping 6A, we removed that. Discussion of Possible Revisions to Chapter 21-City Administrator. This is the job description...
Right.
For, for your new position, because we had a combined administrator/clerk and Connie, we have an administrator only with you. I think we talked about this, there would be, there's actually no require, no need to change the code, correct?
No, and I was just pointing out that you already have the language in there, which allows, to me, to see the, oversee the other departments. All department heads report to the city administrator, including the clerk. So that pretty much takes care of that, I think.
So do we want to actually change the language?
Well, I do a little bit, because if you look at, well, I'm going to ask you guys, 2103, Duties Generally. Item number three says, "Day-to-day Coordination of Daily Activities of the City's Employees and Departments Except the Police Department. Authority to Direct Employees As to the Time and Manner of Carrying Out Work, Including Coordination of Efforts Between Departments." I think he does need to be able to help with the day-to-day, with the police department while we're without a chief. And then the other part, number seven there, is, "Hire and Terminate Employees Excluding the Clerk and the Chief of Police in accordance with the policies established by the council after consultation with appropriate department heads and city council." I'm not sure, I think you probably want to take out the city clerk and the police chief from that, potentially, because you can't do it without council anyway, but we're really limiting them with those two in there. So whatever you guys want, but those were the two that I think need to change. So number seven, is what you're...
You want to just take out the clerk and the police chief?
On number three, I want to...
I'm talking number seven.
Oh, number seven, I want to take those two out. There should be no exclusions, because he can't, he or she, you know, if Jeff's not in this position, whatever, whoever is, they can't do anything without council anyway.
Right.
So I don't know why we would have any exclusions in there, especially if he's going to be doing the day-to-day operations for those departments as well.
So excluding city clerk and chief of police, you want that removed, but the rest of the verbiage the same?
Yeah. And then number three, he would do the day-to-day coordination of the police department. He would coordinate with them right now.
So just take out except the police department?
Correct.
Now, let me ask, though, if we go through and we get a chief of police, are we going to have to change these again?
No. I don't, no, because I know that that would be a good idea.
He can't terminate, he can't terminate the chief of police or the city clerk.
And I thought we had decided that we kind of, we kind of wanted, even if there was a police chief somewhere down the line, we kind of do still want them to work with the city administrator, so that everybody's on the same page, and we have a checks and balance.
Isn't the mayor supposed to do that? I'm just asking.
So it's been both ways. In the past, it's honestly ironic, I know that you probably know that my husband was mayor at one time, and we owned a bar when he was mayor. So when he became mayor, they changed it so that the police chief answered to the city administrator, because it was a conflict of interest to have a bar owner and the chief.
Oh.
And we have that same situation, or we had that same situation when Doug was mayor and Rick was chief. Obviously, Doug's a bar owner. So I think you just eliminate any conflicts that way of anything that could be, you know. So I don't know why we would have any exclusions in there, especially if he's going to be doing the day-to-day operations for those departments as well.
So excluding city clerk and chief of police, you want that removed, but the rest of the verbiage, the same?
Yeah, and then, number three, he would do the day-to-day coordination of the police department. He would coordinate with them right now.
So just take out, except the police department?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Now, let me ask, though, if we go through and we get a chief of police, are we going to have to change these again?
No, I don't, no, because... He can't terminate, he can't terminate the chief of police, or the city clerk.
And I thought we had decided that we kind of, we kind of wanted, even if there was a police chief somewhere down the line, we kind of do still want them to work with the city administrator, so that everybody's on the same page, and we have a checks and balance.
Are you supposed to do that? I'm just asking.
So it's been both ways. In the past, it's honestly ironic, I know that you probably know that my husband was mayor at one time, and we owned a bar when he was mayor. So when he became mayor, they changed it so that the police chief answered to the city administrator, because it was a conflict of interest to have a bar owner and the chief. And we have that same situation, or we had that same situation when Doug was mayor and Rick was chief. Obviously Doug's a bar owner. So I think you just eliminate any conflicts that way, of anything that could be, you know. And the real reason that this is happening is because you have a part-time mayor and a part-time council up here. So none of us really have time to be spending as much time as we have been. And he's here every single day, doing all the day-to-day stuff, he knows everything, the budget inside and out, or he will. So it just makes more sense for him to be the one making those decisions and those calls. Because what happens to us is, somebody calls us and goes, oh, hey, this is happening, and then we're like, okay, why is it happening? And then they're like, well, I don't know, this person said that, and this person did that, and that person did this. And then we have to spend two hours trying to decipher who actually did do what, and then make a decision. And so it's just, I think, better...
It's better service for everybody if it's under someone who's engaged.
Here every day.
Every day, and here every day.
So those would be my changes.
Were those the only two places?
Yeah, I think so.
Now, is there anything in here that combined the two duties of the clerk and the administrator? Because that's, you know, what was happening before, was both things were being done by one person.
Yeah, so when we get Christina up to par, where she's all on board and ready to go with the clerk position on her own and full in, we'll leave it, but right now, since Connie's still technically a city administrator, and she'll be doing some of the clerk stuff, I don't think we change that until after Connie's gone.
So bring this back for first reading with taking out those two passages.
Next meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do we have to have a public hearing on it first?
Well, yeah, you have to have a...
Public hearing and first reading would be first reading.
On August 10th, yeah.
Yeah.
So you probably need a motion for that?
Uh, yes.
Because you want to have a public hearing. Okay, so I'll make a motion to have the public hearing and the first reading on that night. I don't, I know you got to put it on there to waive, but I don't ever, I never want to waive the second and third readings. I know it'll be council decision, but I just think that that's always a bad practice, but I know it has to be on the agenda, but...
I mean, yeah, you don't have to.
You don't have to put it on the agenda, but we, and we don't have to approve the waiving of any readings, and I don't like that.
You don't have to.
All right, so I need a motion, or I have a motion. Do I have a second for the revisions as spelled out by Stephanie?
Second.
John, seconds? All right, roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan, aye. Thanks, we'll have that ready for the next meeting then, Jeff.
Yep.
All right, six C, discussion of possible action regarding resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty, authorizing and approving a certain loan agreement, providing for the issuance of five point two-five million dollars general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series twenty-twenty, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. The levy of taxes, are we, we don't have to raise taxes for this.
Right, this just says it's a general obligation bond, and that, what that means in effect is that the full faith and credit of the city is, doesn't mean, it doesn't mean you have to use property taxes for it. It just means that that is a possibility, and so when you do these kinds of things for GO, you have to, that's part of the verbiage.
And we're not planning to use property taxes at this moment in time, any of that, so...
Part of it's a refunding bond, and then, yeah. But water revenues and other things can go towards it, too.
Any other discussion?
I'll to approve.
All right, I have a motion to approve the authorization and approval of the loan agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nathan, aye. All right, five, or sorry, six D, discussion of possible action regarding resolution four zero dash two oh two oh, approving plat of survey number two four three seven, splitting of lot fifty-two, Novaca Estates, fifth edition. This was in front of P and Z.
Yeah, this was approved by P and Z on July 16th, it's just a simple, uh...
And it carried, right?
Yeah, it carried unanimous.
Unanimous.
It's just a division of a duplex, duplex lots, they're just splitting it in two.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Aye, second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Travis?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Nathan, aye. All right, six E, discussion of possible action regarding resolution forty-one dash twenty-twenty, updating employee handbook.
So we think it's outdated, it's probably time to look at it. Not just the employee handbook, I mean, I know that's what's on the agenda right now, but I know that Sarah's been working on our policies and procedures, and it's just, hasn't been looked at in several years, and it's just time to take a peek and see if there's anything in there that's outdated, or at some point, we'll work on the policies and procedures, too, but we'll get started with the employee handbook. I think this is something that, well, maybe not the goal setting, but we talked about having those work sessions and stuff like that. In my head, this would be something that we would do during, you know, we would just pick parts of it and go. Each session, we would just pick parts and do. And we talked about doing that at the end of council meetings, you know, so that we didn't have any expense of paying council to be at special meetings. So maybe, you know, for the next several council meetings, we could just pick a part of the handbook and see, you know, if everybody wanted to just review it. I think you all have a copy of it, it was sent to you.
Yeah.
Just review it, and see what you don't like, or what you think is outdated.
Well, we have a resolution in front of us for changes to the vacation schedule in our package.
Well, that's because of the union contract.
Okay, so that's just, just the details of the union contract, the...
We're just matching, we're just changing the employee handbook to match the union contract, but there's a lot of other things in there that probably need to be looked at, so we should...
Do, then...
So we want to, when do we want to start doing that?
Yeah, to the end of that discussion, when do we want to start working on that? Once, at the end of every council meeting, until we're done, or...
You guys want to do it, like, I...
Well, is there any chance that that goal session meeting, could, we could start talking about it then? On the seventeenth, like, do half and half, or something, or like, spend a half an hour, just kind of getting a game plan?
I suspect it'll run into a lot of time. I think it'd be a good idea, better, I mean, personally, if we took two policies, let's say, per meeting, and hacked away at them.
I like that.
Maybe what we should do is each of us review the employee handbook, and see what you read that sticks out to you as, like, this is probably outdated, or a problem. And then we could just take turns bringing that to council at the end of a meeting for discussion. Would you guys want to do that?
I think that's agreeable.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll start with the employee handbook, and then go to policies and procedures.
Is the handbook available on, like, the city side, or for the public, or...
It is, it is an open document, like, you can see it, it's open to the public. I don't know if it's on the website, to be honest, I've never looked at it. I don't know that that's something that probably is out there usually, since it's an employee handbook.
If you're looking at the handbook, I would assume it'll be on the under, or...
Yep, yep, yep.
It has to be.
Absolutely.
Then there should be a little public input on it.
And you, I don't know if you care about the employee handbook as much as you do the policies and procedures, maybe. Two different books, so just keep that in mind when you're looking at it for, on the agendas.
Some of those things that are in the policies, I think, belong in the handbook.
Yeah, yes.
And more employee stuff, because really, the handbook should be internal issue, internal matters, and the policies are really external.
Do you want to explain the vacation thing? Do you have it in your head right now?
What we did with the vacation is, we allowed the newer employees to accrue that second week sooner, so they could actually take time off. We have two employees that would have had to waited another year to get two weeks of vacation, so...
So our old policy, you got one week of vac, so first of all, our employees don't get any vacation until a whole year after they've been here, which I think is crazy. And I would be in favor of changing that, but anyways. So after the first year, you would get one week, and then you would have to wait until you were at five years to get the second week.
That was what it was, I can't remember exactly, I just know now you get it after the second.
Now you get it after the second year. If we, if this gets approved tonight. So I'll make a motion to update the handbook to match the union contract.
I'll second.
What's the employee training authorization?
Oh, that we discussed at the last meeting, so that's like, let's say that one of the maintenance guys goes and gets their water certification, they get a raise for that certification. It was in there before, and somehow it got taken out, and it's always just been given to them, but it needs to be in there, it should have never been taken out. And this is the first time I've ever done the union contract negotiation, so I didn't know that it had ever come out.
And also follows up with, they've got to give you up to four years of service, otherwise they have to prorate that class back to you, to the city. They'll get the cost.
And I think that that's standard procedure, like, even in the fire department, right, Brandon? If we pay for somebody to go get their EMS, or medical, whatever, and they leave, they have to pay us back for that class. Yeah.
All right, well, we have a motion to approve the updates spelled out in the employee handbook. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sarah, seconds. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan, aye. And as far as updating, reviewing the rest of the book, shall we start next meeting?
I mean, whenever you have a chance to look at it, if you find something, just bring it.
Okay, and we can just cover it in the normal reports section of our agenda, or should we have a...
If you want to tell me beforehand, I'll make copies of the two sections for the packet.
I'd rather have it in the agenda spelled out, what we're looking at.
So just tell me beforehand, and I'll get it ready.
Spelled out what we're looking at, or just that we're looking at the employee handbook?
To Joe's point, if, if the citizens want to be present to have input, in addition to our review...
Well, I was just going to say, he could just standard, put it on the end of every agenda, and then if somebody had something, we can discuss it. If nobody has anything, we don't discuss it.
I like that plan, to be that vague.
Yeah, that's fine, too.
Okay, all right, let's do that, then, starting with...
I won't have anything by the next council meeting, I need a little break.
I understand why. Okay, we'll do that. All right, six F, discussion of possible action regarding resolution forty-two dash twenty-twenty, hiring city clerk.
So again, Connie did the job of two people, she's leaving, retiring. Jeff took the administrator job, so now we need a clerk. And so we had interviews, we had four people that applied for the position, we interviewed all four of them. One person had bank reconciliation experience, but that was it, nobody had any city government, nobody had any agenda, I mean, nothing. Christina does part of the clerk job right now, in her billing job, so she does, like, accounts payable, accounts receivable, stuff like that. She does some of that payroll, which is a big one. So we did offer the job to Christina, and she accepted it pending council approval. She will start at twenty-three dollars an hour, and that's for six months that she's on probation. And then at the end of the six months, we would review her performance, and then possibly bump her up to twenty-four dollars an hour, which is what, just so you guys know, what we did was, we researched all the towns, like, around us that were the same size, same whatever. We've actually been looking at that for all of our city jobs, to kind of see if we're on par with what other, we're actually a little low compared to all of our counterparts. So we are trying to work to get everybody, you know, where they should be, but, so that's where that salary came from. And we did budget for that last year, so it is in the budget.
My question would be, if she didn't quite have the credentials, so are we sending her somewhere to train her for the job?
Well, that's what Connie's here for.
Yeah, Connie will be helping her, but she's also, Christine has been also taking a lot of classes to be able, to be able to do this position as well.
So Christina is our clerk, and so what happens is, in April and October of every year, her and Connie do a conference. And she goes one track for the utility billing, and Connie goes another track for the financials. So the clerk really needs to be on that financial track. So Christina, actually, on her own time, because she knew that she was going to be applying for this job, and knew it was here, she actually took some accounting courses, and I think she just finished those last week. That was something she did on her own, not through the city, but she took the initiative to do that on her own. And then that's why Connie's here for the next few months, to kind of train her. But with all of our employees, I think it's this council's mindset, who knows what future councils will think, but we are encouraging all of our employees to take any classes that they want, that will help them with their jobs, to better them in those positions. Because there's a lot of stuff out there available for them, and nobody really takes advantage of it right now.
Maybe a little outside influence would be okay.
She'll go, what's that one, league?
Iowa League of Cities.
Yeah, so they're doing that, it's virtual, a lot of stuff's virtual this year.
Iowa Municipal, Iowa Municipal Finance Officers Association, she gets a lot of support through that, too. And they have trainings, like, at New Moin, like, a couple times a year, and they bring people in. And she's also on the list serve for city clerks, so the Call for Clerks Net. So she has the resources of all the experienced clerks in Iowa, has help, too, and she needs it and stuff.
The benefit to Christina is, she has been here for eight years, but also, she's on the city council in Bennett, she lives in actually Bennett, and she's on the city council there, so she's got some of that background. I think she'll be a really good fit.
She's been an asset to our city for a long time.
So I'm making a motion to hire her with what I quoted, the twenty-three dollars an hour with a six-month, you know, period, then at that time, warranting performance, she would get bumped up to twenty-four.
All righty, we have a motion, I will second. Oh, okay. All righty, John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And Nathan, aye. All right. Agenda item seven, correspondence, anything?
Correspondence.
Nothing?
Nope.
Okay. Eight, reports, city engineers report.
Long time no see.
Yeah, it's been a while.
I was here a couple of times.
I know, sorry. We don't blame you.
Few things to report on, on August 17th, the same day that you set for your bill settings. I'll be meeting with DOT, they asked that we conduct an online meeting with them to go over the report that we did for Highway 30.
Okay.
Some questions, they want to go through the evaluation we did on structures. And hopefully, we'll get some feedback from them, possibly reaching agreement at that point, be able to get back to you possibly that same day, before your bill setting.
Perfect.
On the ECPO, CDPG grant, John Bruce is supposed to be the person that we're dealing with, he's out until August 11th. We've been trying to get something set up to get that grant application started. I know there was a conference call earlier, Tom Bruce from ECPO has been sitting in the place, but hopefully, when John gets back on, we'll sit down with him, and get started on that grant application. We do have some time before that's due, because we have to get on the SRF IUP list, which is something we applied for earlier, but that doesn't happen until September. So now, in September, we'll be working with them to get the CDPG application, which is up to five hundred thousand dollar grant, towards the water system, so...
That would be wonderful.
That is in the works. Also, we've been working on the well siting study, which was previously approved at council for the hearing. And we'll continue to work with VNR on that, we've submitted some exhibits to them, and they have to come up to a site survey, where they review separation distances, to make sure that we don't approach any of the state-nanated separation requirements. And then the last thing I have to report on is, we have worked with Travis, the waste water system has a NPS permit requirement. As part of that renewal, they've asked us, his pre-treatment agreement with Lloyd's table, to update the baseline monitoring report, and we're with Lloyd's to get all the information necessary to incorporate the door permit, and we just completed that. That's what I have, does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, eight B, public works directors report.
Dave got most of it, the only other thing I've done, you know, first, I want to thank the guys for covering for me while I was gone. They, they did a heck of a job stepping up when, when I wasn't there. I have met with Larson, and I've done a walkthrough on some of the concrete damage that they've done during construction for the school project. It's, I know a lot of people are going to wonder why we couldn't get everything replaced, and even though it's, it doesn't look right, it doesn't affect the actual operation of the curb and that, so there's going to be some marks where they left some, some marks in it, but we can't get them to fix it, because it's, I mean, it's just aesthetics, it's not function. But there is, there's quite a bit of curb line they are going to have to replace, and there's sidewalk intersection that Dave and I have to look at tomorrow to go over with that, too, so... If you get any feedback from the school, or that, that's, I gladly walk them through, through everything, everything's been painted over there in green, so they know what, what we're looking at, so...
They won't replace for aesthetic damage?
It's, it's no different than, than a normal semi driving through there and scuffing it, or you...
Oh, okay, like rubber scuffing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was that it for you, Travis?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question. We had, after our last council meeting, something happened out at the water treatment facility? And now, am I understanding this correctly, that somebody took several boxes of soap and poured it into our water plant?
There was...
Sewer plant.
Our sewer plant, sorry.
There was an abundance of, of soap down our sewer system.
Did we get that fixed?
Yes.
And we still don't know anything about who, or how, or what, or when, or...
No, so...
Do you have an estimate as to how much that cost us to take care of?
We've probably, I mean, manpower, we've probably lost a week's worth of three guys.
And money-wise, no way to really judge it?
You had to replace the enzymes, right?
Yeah, well, we had a road router in there, and then a lot of it is, whenever a plant gets upset, we have digesters that hold good bugs in it. So basically, what we do is, we shut the upset part down, we still do our normal treating process, it's always done, our testing, everything else is getting done, but we just start feeding in good bugs again. So basically, we have super clean sewer plant for a week and a half.
So I guess my point to bringing that up is, it is... So I guess my point to bringing that up is it is possible, or we think maybe, that somebody intentionally put soap in the sewer plant. So if anybody knows or hears anything about that, any information would be appreciated because that is your taxpayer dollars that went to fix that and clean it and get it back to where it needed to be.
And then you know, it's called crime stoppers, your tax crime stoppers should be in the house. And possibly. Were there cameras there?
There are not cameras out there.
You can dump it in your basement.
Go in, go out.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't out there. We saw it throughout the sewer line. So I can't, you can't pinpoint where it was. It was just, yeah, it's so. It looked just like somebody had a big frosty beer mug out there. There were just nice clean bubbles coming.
It was a lot of soap. It wasn't just, it wasn't just a, it was a lot of soap.
All right, thank you, Travis. 8C, Police Chiefs Report. Amy, do you have anything for reporting or?
I don't.
Okay. All right. Nothing to report. We're, we have Brandon Segans covering some of our, doing some patrolling in town in lieu of Rick Scott. We've also, as Stephanie already mentioned earlier, we've got Mount Vernon increasing their patrols as well, so. But yeah, nothing else to report other than that. All right, 8F, or I'm sorry, 8D, Fire Chiefs Report. Anything on that front?
No.
8E, City Administrators Report. Jeff, you got anything?
Couple of things. Of note, we had a conference call, sorry, a Zoom meeting with EC cog about the comp plan. So kind of excited EC cog has revamped like some of their processes and stuff. So we're going to be their first person doing a plan under their new direction, so. But I'm glad to hear that. Hopefully, I think it'll be better and we'll get a better product out of it. So kind of excited about that. We kicking that off pretty soon here. Also, of note, Lisbon has a 75.8% census replay, census, sorry, reply rate. So the city's done a really good job where that's eight points above the state average.
Oh, wow.
So the city's done a good job and.
And we need that money because of the, or we need those reports because the census dictates funding and stuff like that.
Every person that we can count is another hundred and some per capita. Hundred and like $40 per capita to us per year in roadie's tax. So I would say.
And you can go online and do it. It literally takes like 10 minutes.
Yeah, just encourage people that have not done it yet to please.
It is super fast and super easy, so please do your census if you haven't yet. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. 8F, Mayor's Report. I don't really have anything to report. I've been spending a lot of time with Stephanie and Jeff and Christina, just picking up the pieces, learning this mayor job. And, you know, thank you to Brandon and Stephanie for all the, you know, help they've given me, Jeff, you as well. I'll keep evolving in that and, you know, staying involved and being on top of the things that the city cares about.
I think we have a question in the audience.
I've got something.
Sure.
About the back of my shop alleyways. That's something I just probably should get a request for next council meeting, discuss that probably.
Well, you could have brought it up during public input, but what is it?
What you got?
Well, I've got probably an inch and a half. Well, I've said something to Connie about it a couple of times.
Okay.
And the alleyway is just, it's too high. So there's actually an inch and a half between the top of putting my overhead door in the back of my shop and between that, on grade height to the alley. Connie, I've said something to Connie about it before. So it's, the water's running in the back door of my shop. I've got two videos of it. So Connie just said, well, we just got two to bays. Well, there's some abundance of water back there. And I'm not trying to complain here. I mean, you guys have got all kinds of come on. But there was a few times where the alley did plow this last winter. So then, of course, when I cleaned the back drive of my shop, it was just a big pond. And then, of course, the water ran back into my shop. So I didn't know. And it's like, I don't have any of these really materialist damage in the back or anything. But really, it's something I'd like to see.
Are you familiar with it at all?
Or some rebranding in that back alley. I know we just keep putting chip and dip on it, but that's just going to keep adding to it. And I think it gets a lot of traffic back there.
Yeah, that's only going to make it worse.
Can you take a peek at it? So can you put that on the agenda, the next council agenda? And have, we'll have Travis go over and take a peek at it and then come back with like what he thinks, maybe?
Dave need to look at it, too?
What'd you say, Travis?
I said that infrastructure downtown is horrible since 1972. At least, it seems like we always find other things to spend money on. We don't address our infrastructure and our, to promote businesses to come downtown, buy these buildings, but, you know. I had, you guys, I was in a bad spot. I bought mine, but I probably never thought of it knowing, but I know now.
Did we address your drainage issues, though?
Somewhat.
I think we did.
It's getting there. It's getting there. Unless we can either chip, instead of paving, will help a lot. No, I mean, everything we can do will help, but, you know, I just sometimes feel that, you know, we're investing in parks and these other things, but yeah, we're not investing in our infrastructure. And we have buildings out down there flooding and these poor business people, you know, Albright's been there 50 years and them, them guys across the street, they deal the same thing I deal with, you know, myself, street. So it just.
I haven't heard anything from you.
I think, and this is what needs to happen. They need to come and talk to us about it.
Yeah.
They have a half a year.
Oh, well, I, I mean, I haven't heard anything. Yeah, I'm new, so.
I'm just saying, I mean, old folks, they've played for 40 years and nobody's.
Sure. So Travis, I've been on the council for two and a half years and nobody's come in that two and a half years. But let's put it on there and let's talk about it.
They've probably been pushed away by other councils.
Yeah, actually, you just get tired of complaining. You know, I honestly, that's just what I do.
So do you want to be on the agenda too, Travis?
I'll be more than happy to go talk to Albright. I mean, I'll, I'll go talk to him and let them know.
Still appreciate that. Travis, do you want to be on the next agenda, too, or you don't have an issue right now?
No, I just was curious because my alley's getting full of weeds and everything else. Walking down at the van, there'll be everywhere. I'm just like, I mean, I can't maintenance, I would, but, you know, it's hell for me. But I don't know what, I mean, just for me, it's the look of downtown things. I mean, I'm trying to, you know, I put lights down alley and I paid for my own bill to light it up when people walk down and each one turns on. And I'm just trying to make things look nicer. And eventually, and thank you for the grant, and help me finally finish off the back of my building and clean everything up. Hopefully, be nice, but I don't know if people realize how much that get used. All them alleys do, and especially that walking alley with me. And it just, to me, it's an embarrassment. And to me, it's a reflection of your community, your town. And I would, you know, I try to out there pull some weeds or this and that, but hell, when you can't see it's the easiest thing to keep. You know, things looking best I can, but, you know, it's getting better. And that was better than what we had, but if it could get finished off, you know, and you chip and seal or do something where you can be maintenance easier in Florida, then just sure, I think, make your downtown look better. I think we're moving in the right direction for sure. I wish I did more and start doing something.
Right. No, I, I certainly, I, I am all about something looking nice. What, I mean, we, we're ownerships of this town. So the whole town needs to look nice, not just the downtown, but everywhere needs to look nice.
Well, that's what you're seeing with, that's what's me as you start to see, like, you go to Walmart and these places. I've seen the car with my mom, she's like, there's trash everywhere. It's just like, nobody has any pride anymore in their community or their nation or anything. It's sad to me.
So I agree with you that we should look at this stuff and see if there's issues. But keep in mind for us sitting up here, it's really, really hard. Because here's what's happening. You've got our, head of our maintenance department telling us that they're a week behind because three guys had to go clean out suds from somebody putting soap. So I mean, and then you have people saying, well, we don't need this employee. We don't need that employee. But what people don't know is that these employees, we probably do, but every time we do it, all we get is a bunch of backlash. So it's really hard for us to say, let's go spend the money to chip and dip alleys because we're going to have 10 people in here going, why are you paying money to chip and dip an alley when we have this problem going on? And so it's, it's a nonstop balance up here for us.
Those people don't, you know, those people live in those places.
No, they don't.
They may be complaining.
No, they don't, but.
Just the city, when it took over and bought Wilson's property, they found out that it's too few to water in the base of the water grain, you know?
Yeah.
And they wondered why Holden wasn't complaining for a year, so.
I still don't think people realize, I mean, we just got the Mackinac property, which takes about one day a week to maintain fully. That property itself takes one day a week to keep up with and maintain. People don't realize it. It's great that you guys are all here and kind of getting involved and listening to what's going on because I think you'll have a different appreciation for what the city actually does and doesn't do. Because there's a lot going on that you guys don't know about or even see. Like, you're talking about what you see at your location. Well, there's 2,000 people in this town that see it at their own locations, too. And everybody's got their own wish list. So we just have to prioritize. Well, lately, we don't really make anybody happy. But hey, we're giving it a shot and we'll get it right sooner or later. We'll figure it out one way or another.
They will figure it out. And Travis.
I appreciate your feedback.
But we can't fix it if we don't know about it. So I do appreciate you guys coming in here and talking about it because this is the first time I've heard about either one of those since I've been here.
Well, you know, I've had a goal for a while, trying to eventually get something that brings some things downtown. If you can hard downtown, if you're dead, you might have gone.
Well, eventually, we'll end up like, you know, Mechanicsville or Stanwood or something where we have no downtown if we don't invest in it.
What I'm saying, we're cut off now.
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, no exit.
And that, we've discussed that several times in.
And Sarah, you're going to feel it, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And anybody else that has a business. And I'm wanting to start some mighty foot traffic. Art don't settle on mine. You know?
Right.
Maybe you come meet me and see what I do and get my story and things to help do that. And I feel like I can do that, just create foot traffic, grab events and do some things, but.
So I don't.
It wouldn't happen overnight for me.
I don't know if you knew, but Travis Jubek has been very vocal about this, you know, that we cannot be stagnant. We have to do something now that we've been bypassed to keep ourselves relevant. And there was talks about getting a committee together to try to come up with different plans and ideas for our town and stuff like that. And Travis, you had a lot of really good ideas and a lot of, I mean, you were kind of spearheading that.
Yeah, I've been talking with, we got rid of food trucks.
Yeah.
A bit like that. I remember. I am the best of the one. Anyway. Hey, I'm coming from blind. I looked in the mirror. I looked in the mirror. No, I've talked to Laura about it and now that Casey Crawl's getting her place going down.
Yeah.
And I got, I wish Becky could open her front. And then Mark and Carrie. Some of us, you know, it's going to take some of us to get involved in, in things and even with Sarah or something. Talk to them, come up with some of these ideas and get some things moving. But I'm just not ready. And for me being blind, everything's twofold, threefold for me. So I'm going to need some help with these people, but I have no problem getting involved and trying to do some of these things and get some ideas going, you know?
So that's the big thing, though. You, you want to talk about doing all of this stuff, this revitalization downtown and doing all this stuff, but people forget, that costs money.
It does.
You know, and so as soon as you start wanting to spend some money, then of course, everybody gets upset because you're spending money for nothing, you know? One of the things that we need to do is we need to get people to come into town. You know, and it's one of the things I was going to bring up tonight, too, was we have to work on getting out to that bypass. I know you guys don't like the idea of it, but we've got to do it. You know, either annexation, we need to get services out there. We've got to give somebody an opportunity to build something right there because that will bring some traffic into town.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, I have Diane Owen from the Gazette in my back pocket. So anytime I want to do anything, I'll do this call. And she should come do an art fund me or whatever I want to do, but I'm just not there yet, you know? And I'm hopefully, you know, getting, it's going in the right direction. And like I told you back when I got my siding and things, that this isn't an app for me overnight. Just I can't do like I used to Travis, you know? And, but the thing is, I got the Irish Department line, they're coming tomorrow. And they're, you know, she's looking at, trying to help me get some more money to finish my gallery and stuff. And she said, there's opportunities there for me that they'll help with fundraising or other things, too, that I can put on or these things. So I mean, there's, there's options for me to be able to take advantage of my disability. You know, but it just, it's not an app overnight, is the only thing, you know, so.
Part of that complex, I mean, that was, you know, one of the, when the complex is done, which is a ways down the road. But we're going to start with the soccer fields because that's the cheapest, easiest thing to build. But eventually, there will be a complex there where people can rent the fields and have tournaments and stuff like that. You know, hoping, I mean, I don't know if you guys have ever followed. It's north of Myers Meadow. It's all that property north of Myers Meadow. Yeah, we don't, we. It's, it's in addition to Mackinac.
Yeah.
Mackinac will be just like a, like there's a, you know, butterfly park and the barn will be there and stuff. We've talked about maybe using the barn as like an amphitheater or something like that to have events and stuff like that there. I mean, there's a lot of talking going on right now, what we're going to do with it. But, but eventually, there will be baseball and softball fields out there at that complex, hopefully to bring people in and do things like that. And I don't know if any of you follow traveling baseball or softball, but those are huge events and you can never get enough field space. There are not enough fields in this area for all of the tournaments that happen. And they pay money to rent those fields and things like that. So that's one thing. We talked about doing some other stuff at the city park once we kind of get away from there and don't have to use that for the school and soccer and all of that kind of stuff, like we use it now. Potential of doing things there. I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do, but somebody has to spearhead it. Somebody, and maybe it's a group. Maybe you get a group of people together who want to work on economic development, you know, or, or things like that. But somebody has to take charge of it and get it together. And then council would work with them to make their thoughts and ideas and dreams come to fruition.
Yeah, so if you, if you have the ideas that you set the regular, then present it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, I brought the comp plan before and that's going to happen. That's a big part of it. And when we have those meetings, I hope the public will attend and have input in those sessions because that's, they're the big drivers of that stuff. So when we have the economic development, the community development, parts of that, hopefully people will show up and, and have influence in that. Because it's a very, it's a bottom up process that depends on people.
So historically, the city administrator worked on a lot of economic development and stuff like that. Well, Connie's focus was more on the financials of the city and getting the city back into good financial state. Well, Jeff is going to focus more on the economic development side of things and different things like that because now we're going to have a clerk to do all that financial stuff. So he will be freed up to do some of the other stuff that maybe hasn't gotten as much attention as it needed in the last few years.
You had a question. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I have two points. First, it seems like you're unhappy that us taking a man a day to take care of the Mackinac property. Well, what the hell did you expect when you bought it that we're just going to sit there and take care of itself? And the second point I want to make is you're worried about downtown. If we had entrance and exit ramps off of the bypass onto the Sullup Road is what we needed. But it was always my understanding that the city didn't want entrance and exit ramps off of Sullup Road, which is absolutely insane.
Well, you understand wrong.
That's committee.
On both things. I was not saying that I was upset that it was going to take eight hours to take care of the Mackinac property. I'm very happy to have the Mackinac property. I want you guys to know that that's not something that just sits over there and nobody maintains it. There is work to be done on that property and we're doing it. This council has, we had no say in where the exits and entrances off of that came from. None.
Well, actually, you know, to that point, we had many, many meetings on that. And that was a.
For years.
The Sullup, the Sullup area, I mean, it was, that's where we wanted it. I mean, that is actually where we wanted it and we fought pretty hard for it. But the DOT, just they made the decision, basically is what happened, is the DOT said, it's too close to the one in Mount Vernon. We're not going to do it. So we ended up having to push it out.
We had to fight with them for months to get a light out there. I mean, they don't do what we say. We do what they say. And that's how it goes. We don't get a say.
It's hard to believe that they didn't want one there because of an emergency route. If it's got, highway one's cut off from X140, or that is to Mount Vernon, they're going to route people off X140 to Swisher Way, then they're going to bring people down Sullup Highway. Now you got to bring them into Lisbon, and then they got to go one way or the other, go on to Lisbon again.
Right, but it was atrocious.
That whole process was, oh, that was.
That has been going on for years. When I say years, I mean, like 15, 20 years, we've been talking about that bypass.
About the bypass, yeah. And our input, we tried.
Story of 1969.
Yeah.
He's not being sarcastic.
No, that's true.
He's not being sarcastic.
I mean, we, we tried. I know, I sat out in the audience for at least three or four meetings on just that. And that's all we talked about. And they, you know, they pushed back and they pushed back and they wanted to do this. They wanted to do that, so.
They don't care what we think.
Do they have an old thirty yet?
That's what he was talking about earlier. They gave us an offer on what they would give us for Highway 30. Give us to, there's projects that have to be done there, so.
Hope somebody's going to help us bring it back to shape.
Yes, and so they gave us a dollar amount.
They gave us the money to do it.
They gave us a dollar amount and said, this is what we'll give you to get it back to shape. And we said, no, that's not what you'll give us to give us back to shape because that's not going to cover it. So Dave is our engineer and he's been fighting that out for, since December. Because they literally sent us a letter in December and said, okay, we're done. Now you take it. And we were like, no, we're not ready to take it. We, that's not enough money. And they've been fighting about it ever since December.
Just to kind of give you an idea of how it is with the DOT. Just to kind of give you an idea of how it is with the DOT, Connie had emailed DOT asking about a light out there, because it's dark. When you get off that, it's dark. Their reply was-
Where?
The bypass.
On the exit.
At Lisbon Boulevard and Old Thirty.
Old Thirty.
Where the bypass comes to Old Thirty.
DOT's response was, it was not in the plan. It took myself, I think Nate, and Connie to email them again, saying it has to happen.
That was Lynn County.
We have to have-
Not the light at the Lisbon exit out there?
Yeah.
Yes. And finally, they responded back was, we looked at things and we agree-
They agreed, they agreed to put a light in, just like at the top of Washington-
But it took three of us-
And Washington hits Highway One.
Nathan is right. We initially emailed the DOT, and they told us there was nothing that they could do for us, because it was, we needed to go to Lynn County. And so that, then we started emailing Lynn County, and they said, well, we're not going to do anything for you, because we're not in construction season right now. So you guys have to wait until next year when we get into construction season. Well, then construction season started, and we never heard from anybody. So then they started emailing again. And then he finally said, I'm sorry it's taken me so long to respond to you, but you're right, it needs a light.
No. And if it was in city limits, we would have had it done. It would have been-
It would have been done.
It would have been done right away. But it was in county, and it was not in DOT, so it was fighting them to get it.
Honestly, the whole thing's a nightmare. If you use that exit, when you're coming off of the bypass to come down to Lisbon, it's terrible. You, you can't, cars come flying up there. You can't really see them, because it's kind of at an incline. And it's really hard, there's not really good visibility there. I mean, it's a mess.
I heard it's almost like the spring bells were that one fifty-one that-
I would agree. I would agree one hundred percent that it's like that.
I'm just imagining if we're bringing up here in vaccines there.
Which we've complained about that too, but literally, they don't care. Yeah.
So we are, we, we do what we can as far as we can, I mean, that's-
We had to email the railroad and call them five or six times before that got fixed out there.
Well, they didn't fix it.
Well, it's better than it was, and it took us six months to get there.
You're right. That last, that's terrible.
The siding, it's still got them, them railroad, wooden railroad ties that they drive on. It's missing pieces of stuff for the siding.
Then I, I encourage you to contact Union Pacific, because-
Because we did.
I contacted them, and the next day, they were out there fixing it. The road was closed.
It took us six months.
But it took us a while to get there.
We, right. We didn't even know that they were closing down the street. I think the fire department found out before we, the city found out. So again-
Ten minutes.
Right. It was within ten minutes of them closing it down. I'm not even kidding.
They notified of ten minutes before that they were closing it down for like three or four days.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of people that, you know, think that we sit up here and we're ridiculous. But if you guys only knew half of the things that we, we've dealt with, whatever, it, you, you have a better, maybe a better understanding.
There's a reason not everybody runs for it.
What's that?
Right.
There's a reason not everybody runs for it.
You're right.
Right. It's a thankless job.
Yes.
Yep. But before you sit and complain and bitch and moan about everything that we're doing, you probably should look into what we're doing.
There are no fun in that.
At least ask a couple questions.
That's just like-
Exactly. All right, we got to get going.
That was you, Nate. Are you done?
I am done. So eight G council reports. Sarah, would you like to start?
I, I don't have anything. Just thanks, Brandon, for stepping in. Travis, I'm glad you're back. Not a hundred percent, but you're back. Thanks to your staff who's been cleaning up soap suds. Too bad we couldn't have a spa day or something with it, right? I, that's all I have.
Okay. Stephanie?
I don't really have a lot either, but I will tell you that I have been working with Nate a lot lately, and Jeff, and, well, everybody, John, all of you guys. But what I want to say about Nate in particular is, remember that Nate ran for city council. Nate did not sign on to be mayor of this fine town. He got shoved into that position, unfortunately. And he has put, he, he was on vacation, did not get to do anything on his vacation, because he spent the entire time dealing with city work. It, he has put a lot of work into this, and you guys should appreciate Nate stepping up to do the job that he's doing. And I appreciate you stepping up to take on some of that responsibility and doing those things.
Thank you.
Because I know you did not sign on for this. So I do appreciate it. What?
What is going on?
Doug is on a leave of absence, and I think until further notice, I guess, is what he said. Until further notice. So Doug will have to decide whether he's going to come back. He was having some health issues. I, I think ninety days-ish.
Yeah, he, he said sixty to ninety days, I think. And it's, I've, I've heard he's coming back. I've heard he might not. It's, it's a little bit up in the air, but until-
It's a decision that he needs to make.
Right.
It hinders us a little bit, because Nate is the mayor, but he's also a voting member of council. So like traditionally, when we do like employee interviews and stuff like that, it would be two council members, the mayor and the city administrator. Well, we couldn't do that this year, because that would be three council members together, and you can't have three council members together. So it, it is putting us at like a limited capacity to some of the things that we're doing. But Doug, I think, is doing better. And he needed a little bit of time away, and he got that. And hopefully, he'll come back stronger than ever and-
So when he comes back, all you guys get a break?
I am actually taking a break, one way or another.
There you go, Doug.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you very much. I've already spoke, so I don't have anything. Travis?
The only thing I had was, I want to see us work on getting out to the bypass services or and or, and or annexation. We need to make that a priority. We're in a new budget year, so we need to make it a priority.
We need to come and go or flipstart out there.
So that's my, that's my two dollars worth.
Have you guys talked about any, no words, anything like that?
No.
Um, we, well, I, I attended the, so the DOT had a workshop down at Gwen's, and I attended it as a council member. And something that they told us is we could only put billboards up if we have the land. So obviously, none of that land is city. So we would have to look at property owners along that to get permission to put them up.
So along with that, the, the Lisbon sign that is east of town, when we, when we did that, the idea was that when the bypass came, we would then move that out. Well, we have to work on getting that moved out now. So now that we have the bypass there, we should be able to move that out. So-
Do you see what it costs for businesses to put their name on that sign out there east of Lisbon? That was published in the paper.
What was it?
A couple thousand dollars to put a little sign up there.
Um, the DOT. It's through the DOT. You have to go through the DOT.
But yeah, that's-
Are you talking about the sign, are you talking about the signs that say like food this way or gas this way? Is that what you're talking about?
There's also stipulations, like restaurants, they have to serve three meals a day. So they have to serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner. I mean, there's restrictions for businesses to put it out there. Trust me. I, I mean, I, I've sat in the meeting and listened to, there are a lot of restrictions. And there was, this was actually a, a meeting for business owners that was down at Gwen's. So that's kind of how that goes.
What makes you feel we'll put it right at the exit?
What's that?
Well, if we put a sign for Lisbon itself.
I asked. I asked if we could put a sign in Mount Vernon saying Lisbon next to exits, because technically, next to exits, you can get to Lisbon. I was shut down.
Because they, here's what they say. They have a sign out there, like if you've noticed, you'll see a sign that says Martel, so many miles this way, Solon, so many miles that way. The reason that they get those is because they don't have their own exit off of the interstate. We don't get one, because technically, we have our own exit. So they're not going to put out there that Lisbon's so many miles, or, you know, this way or that way. Because we wanted in Mount Vernon to say Lisbon, one mile that way or whatever. They won't give it to us, because we have our own exit further down.
Used to, you're right. Used to. We never pictured it.
So we don't get to have that.
I'm done. Yep. John, you got something?
Oh, I got a bunch of that.
Why not?
That's for last.
I've responded to these DOT meetings. You would not believe all the rules they have. It's just my modeling. If you talk for a half an hour, I'm not alone, probably, a little, a little bit of that. As far as the alleys behind the businesses on Main Street, I've been around, we've revisited, revisited that. It's mainly the streets have been built up for the last hundred and twenty-five years, and the buildings, same level we built that. And the only thing I think of, we've revisited, our engineer about that on Main Street, also drains. And we did put in one by Southeastland that helped them. And it didn't completely solve everything. If we would have been more foresighted and built that, that opened up just a few inches, it would have made a big difference. As far as the bypass, we have a committee working on that and did a lot of work on it. The city did have an input, but the DOT was worried about, I don't remember what it was, some environmental thing, wetlands and some bats that lived down in the area. We would not believe all the things that went into the decision. So it's not just straightforward what you think. I'd like to mention that Lisbon Library is still operating as usual. If you need a book, you can call them, talk to them, and do a curbside pickup. Southeastland's still providing food to people that need food. They're working on another pop-up food pantry where anyone can go with their food. If you're interested in that, give Southeastland a call between nine and four o'clock. That's all I have.